I'll call meeting to order, please rise to the public media.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska government body, the city of Seward, by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed in the back of the room by the door as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is also posted in the room. A participant's sign and sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Please raise your hand at the appropriate time and you'll be recognized to speak. You are to limit your remarks to five minutes and state your name and your address for the clerk's record. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward deserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Zach, Hendrick, Camperon?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Here.
The first item this evening is the draft minutes of November 3rd, 2020.
Second.
The motion and a second is ready for discussion. Sign non, please call the roll.
Zach, Hendrick, Camperon?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Martin Harris?
The next five items consist of this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
The motion and a second is ready for discussion. Sign non, please call the roll.
Zach, Hendrick, Camperon?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Martin Harris?
First public hearing this evening is a special use permit application for property located at 1778 Pine Street to operate an auto body shop. Greg, would you like to take this?
Yeah, this is the Lavender Auto Body Shop project that we previously spoke about. We approved this for sale in the rail campus by the city previously. And then we recently also approved the, I believe, the tax increment financing for this project as well, correct Andrew?
Correct.
And so the last element of this one is due to the nature of the business park zoning. They also need to acquire a special use permit and so they've applied for that. This item was recommended unanimously by Planning and Zoning Commission.
Alright, thank you Greg. Are there any questions or comments from the council? This is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on the first item this evening, please indicate at this time. Sign non, motion to comment, and I will close the public hearing, the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council for any questions or comments. The motion, is there a second?
Call second.
The motion and a second, is any further discussion? Sign non, please call the roll.
Zach, Hendrick, Camperon?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkin?
Yes.
Item number two is also a public hearing. This is tax increment finance application of Arrowhead Estates LLC, Seward Twin Oaks Development, 7th Edition, Outlots A and B. We have our TIP attorney Andrew Willis here with us this evening. This item has two subparts, A and B. Andrew, did you want to start with that?
Yes, good evening mayor, council members. And I think I'll start with just kind of a little procedural history of where we're at and what's going on. So, the CRA met on this TIP application last week on Tuesday. They voted to submit the plan to the public hearing, the Planning Commission and the city council tonight, but they did not take any further action, so I'll explain exactly where we were at with that. Last night, the Planning Commission held their public hearing. They made the recommendation for approval of the redevelopment plan amendment as it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So, and then tonight, because the CRA didn't take any action, had not formally made the recommendation to the council, we won't, the council should not take any action tonight. So this is really just the public hearing portion of this. So, the CRA, again as a reminder, the thing to do is they have the plan amendment prepared. They submit it to the Planning Commission for their recommendations, specifically in the purview of the Planning Commission. The council also looks at that plus everything else, the entire encompassing piece of that. They make the recommendation to the council, the council, after the public hearing, then makes the decision on that plan amendment. Since there hasn't been the official recommendation from CRA, really what they wanted is they wanted the chance with this one, to let it go through the public hearing process, then it'll go back to the CRA. If they make that recommendation to the council, then it will come back to the council for actual action, but this will be the public hearing portion, just so we are all on the same page that there won't be any action taken tonight and potentially should be done before it's in future.
Since there's no action, we can discuss both A and B together.
Yeah, correct. And then yeah, after the public hearing is done, then that will be implemented for that.
Andrew, is there, if the CRA recommended it comes back to council, will there be another chance for a public hearing?
There would not be unless the council would want there to be. I mean, this is the public hearing that's required for this plan amendment. So yeah, that's kind of just, you know, leading up to where we're at. So the application for this Arrowhead Estate redevelopment project, again, big picture, what this is, this is 29 units, residential units, kind of south of the rail campus. In the, in the plan amendment, we show them the kind of overall master plan, but this project is only 29 units. It shows more, you know, could be potentially out there afterwards, but there's no, again, just try to make it clear. This only deals with 29 units. It's a single phase, so the idea would be to set one effective date for the TIP. There wouldn't be any phasing as, you know, as those houses came online, sometimes in these subdivision projects, you'll set, you know, effective date for phase one, year one, and year two, so that you're getting 15 years from every single home. The idea here is setting a TIP clock for the entire 29 units. And then they've kind of projected out what they think they'll build, you know, five in the first year, another seven in the second year. Well, that seven in the second year would only capture 14 years of TIP. The next few in the third year would only capture 12 years of TIP, rather than setting a new TIP clock for each phase. So that's, that's the way this project is set up. It's, again, it's, it's south of the rail campus, it's, you know, currently ag ground, so vacant, shown as ag use in the comprehensive plan, designated as urban reserve or long-term growth area. This area in the comprehensive plan is kind of got a development concept, concept, this South 15 neighborhood. So it's really, in the comp plan, shows this as a potential for this residential neighborhood and kind of pulled some of that into this plan amendment. So, again, you know, in the comp plan, this really is conceptually designated as a redevelopment, I mean, sorry, not a redevelopment, a residential area as it is. So, so looking at that, the applicant has, essentially, they're looking at infrastructure costs and it's pretty, you know, pretty, I guess I'd say straightforward TIP costs, you know, taking bare ground and putting in public infrastructure. So it's going to be utilities, streets, grading, there's a lift station, the TIP application. Again, the TIP application shows kind of even the larger concepts. There's $3.3 million of costs shown, but there's a million dollars, there'd be over a million, again, for what the 20, when the redeveloper, the applicant talks, they kind of talk about phasing, but I just wanted, so just to make sure my terminology is different. The entire thing is just 29 units. So there's a million dollars of TIP costs in the project, which is just 29 units. More if things don't be on there. But, but again, very, you know, we're talking about bringing out the infrastructure, so all the eligible costs, streets, utilities, grading, site prep. The, you know, schedule would be, they intend to start construction next spring, so 2021. And again, with phasing the actual construction of those homes over, I think, three or four years. But again, worse, the idea would be that if approved, it would be setting one effective date, one TIP clock. So there wouldn't be, I mean, again, if, so if the houses are built up faster, that TIP notice paid off sooner. If the house is built up slower, then that's the redevelopers risking they would not get repaid the entire amount. There wouldn't be any subsequent effective dates for the subsequent phases when it's built out. The proposed TIP amount, the request was 900, well, it would be $953,000. And that was determined, again, with the average assessed home after construction would be $215,000 over the 29 units. And so, again, I'll go through the cost benefit analysis, minus this couple of years of initial phasing. It's about $100,000 of tax increments total for all 29 lots at one time, for the incremental value, for the incremental tax, again, to support that $953,000 in TIP, to pay for the over a million dollars in those public infrastructure costs. And really, when, when I look at these residential subdivision projects like this, you take, and look at that, $953,000 divided by the number of lots, 29, so it's about $33,000 a lot is what we're talking about. So that's, that's buying down that lot cost essentially, where you put in the infrastructure, otherwise have to charge that through. So this allows, this is, I mean, this is how it becomes more affordable. And they can sell those lots for $33,000 less than they otherwise would have to do to end up in the same place. So, that's that, I mean, that's, in my mind, that's how I always look at that. It's about $33,000 per lot, which is, which is, again, pretty consistent with what I see in some of these residential subdivision projects across, you know, and tax increment financing across the state.
So if these lots would be built, it would be purchased by the eventual owner of the house, not by a builder, is that the understanding?
They could be by a builder too. I'll defer to Thomas, he'll talk after, but yeah, they could be by a builder as well. The one thing I guess I would note, just for the council, in the plan amendment, as it's, as it is drafted, and then again, the agreement, which we'll need to go back to the council, or CRA, so that will maybe be presented tonight. We don't have a lot, any sort of those, I mean, limitations or covenants or anything built into that. And that was one of the CRA wanted to look at, which is why they didn't make a recommendation. Now they want to see if they can build in some more detail into that, so. But for now, that's just, I mean, pretty broad, but that's what we're looking at. Or as was presented in the TIP application. So, the statutory, the redeveloper owns the property already. Obviously, they're building homes, so it's going to increase the population density of the area, but that again is the purpose of this, the purpose of this project, you know, identified as that South 15 neighborhood in the comp plan, so it seems to fit in pretty well. Traffic flow, obviously, part of this is TIPs paying for the streets and the infrastructure within the development. I'll talk a little bit more about the cost benefit analysis, just some of the traffic issues that were raised. But otherwise, you know, from a project perspective, we know that it's going to, there's going to have to be a change of zone, there's going to have to be a subdivision. So, both of those things would have to be approved, and again, the plan amendment, the TIP piece, if it doesn't change any of those two things, they still have to go through the entire subdivision approval, change of zone approval. But those two, it's currently I-1, and they're looking to change it to R-3, so it would have to go through that process and be approved, and similar with the subdivision, have to go through the planning process. And again, that's where you're going to pick up a lot more of the detail on this, other than this is just the financing, the tax increment financing piece. The plan notes, again, part of the, you know, some of those kind of key points of the comp plan that this, that this project really hits, in addition to that, really being in the location and design of that South, general design of that South 15 neighborhood. It's, you know, the comp plan, some of the goals were expanding housing diversity, both heightened cost, directing and supporting any incentives towards the mixed income housing. So, you know, the comp plan talks about using any of these tax incentives for mixed income housing. And, you know, more of those residential neighborhoods and housing. The comp plan provides that the city will require 36 housing units annually to support, forecast the population growth. And the 2019 Seward County Housing Study also talks about that. And, you know, obviously, the city of Seward having the greatest demand for reconstruction and needing an estimated 212 new units as a target in Seward, as part of the housing study. And then the cost benefit analysis, that's, I really want to make sure we note, make a couple of notes on this. Starting out in the cost benefit analysis, again, looking at the tax shift and the tax increment, we had a base value of $203,000, 29 lots at $7,000 each. Again, we're looking at just, you know, total, 29 lots at 200, average, average value of $215,000. Some will be higher, some will be lower. The applicant has talked about really that price point of $190,000 to $290,000 as purchase prices on these homes. We use an average of 215, which then it gives us an average valuation increment of $208,000 per lot. So looking at, if you kind of project out on just what they think over the first four years, building five homes that first year, you're going to get a tax increment of $18,000. Seven more go online the second year, you have a total tax increment of $43,000. Another eight go online the third year to get that increment up to $72,000 until all 29 are built out and you have that $100,000 of tax increment for the remainder of the 15 years. And again, if they, you know, if they built it all, for example, if they built up all 29 out of year one, it would just pay off, pay off a lot sooner, but it's built, but there's no, there's no further effective dates. The, I suppose in this case, there's probably two points, at least in the cost benefit analysis piece, that keep coming up as potential issues or has been raised multiple times. So one of them is, you know, in our public infrastructure impacts, the potential traffic issue. It's been raised, it was discussed at the CRA meeting quite a bit, and we have, you know, this would create 29 new homes as part of this project. There's potential, again, while that infrastructure will be built out with TIP, there was concern about what this does, you know, being near Highway 15, having additional traffic on there, where the turning lanes are needed, or if there are more, or what, you know, all these pieces of how that affects Highway 15, or just the traffic in that area. From our, for my purposes on the TIP side, I note that in the cost benefit analysis, the CRA and ultimately the council, you know, is looking at all the costs, all the benefits. In the statute, it's not like there's, it's just, you know, there's no clear answer, it's just weighing all the costs, all the benefits. That's one of those pieces that's really going to be worked out in more detail in the subdivision, any sort of, you know, planning out exactly where those roads go, what's required. Beyond the scope of this, other than making sure we noted it in here, that that was an issue that should be considered as part of this. So I don't have, I don't have the detailed answer or the solutions yet, other than looking at that as part of the overall cost benefit analysis. The other one, you know, and again, we have some, you know, the benefits we see of, you know, having additional housing to support employment, employers having that additional housing, and just the need for housing in general. The other one that's probably worth noting in particular, this being the first large-scale residential project, the impacts on the student populations in school district is one of the things we have to look at. And again, this is a potential negative impact, potentially. Also, long-term, it could be very positive from a tax standpoint, but. So we look at the housing in 29 units, according to, we look at two different numbers. In the housing study, the estimate was 2.43 persons per household. So that could be, we said zero to two children, depending on what the household is. The school district estimated the average of 1.9 students per household. So, between those two numbers, 29 homes, we were using, you know, looking at probably a 12 to 55 students, additional students, that could be the result of these 29 housing units. The current enrollment is approximately 1,500 students. That's 550 in the elementary, 422 in the middle school, 500 everywhere in high school. The, one of the concerns raised was just the capacity in some of those classrooms that are near the student size, the cap on the class size. So if it was go over by a few students, you could potentially see hiring a new teacher at the bright break, then do a couple of different classes. Problem is, again, we don't know, we're saying there's going to be 12 to 55 students. We don't know what classes they would come in, how they would be spread out. It's hard to tell, but that was, again, one of the things that was noted by the school district is that some of these class sizes aren't close to capacity, and there's a potential issue that that would be an additional cost if there had to be new teachers because the classes all of a sudden were beyond that point. Noted that the cost per pupil, per year education is $12,860 per student. So this would, for 15 years, this would defer the tax, the portion of that, the tax that would go to the school district. Quick math that we did, you know, we're talking about approximately 56% of the overall levy goes to educational purposes, whether that's the school district, the bonds, ESU. So we've got 56, so that's about, that would be about $1,900 per lot that we're talking about per year. So that's a portion of that $12,000, not the whole thing anyway. But again, that's, that would be deferred and would not go to the school district for that 15-year period, which, which was raised, which was raised by the school district. Long-term, you have the benefit of that, that going to, you know, that additional revenue going to, tax revenue going to the school district, but that's only after the 15 years. I guess my job is easy because I don't have to come up with the conclusion, other than raise that as the, as the potential issue. So that's in the cost benefit analysis. It is, you know, kind of, those were probably the two pieces that were discussed the longest at the CRA meeting, and so I'll make sure that's clear. Again, ultimately, the CRA did not want to make a decision until there'd been, you know, to hear if there's any other public issues that may have been brought up. And then also, if I'm speculating a little bit on what they said, was that, you know, kind of to look at what the project is and if they can maybe, you know, build in some more safeguards or covenants or something on top of what's there before they present it. There's other people of detail in addition to that. So that's, that's the project as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Andrew. Does the council have any questions or comments at this time?
Andrew, two questions. Have we ever done, has TIP ever funded a large development like this before? I know we did the apartments over in Columbia.
Yeah, in Seward, I mean, the apartments were the residential project, and I guess some of it is the school. Those have a residential component to it, too. But not, that would be, that would be, I would say, I mean, this is pretty common across the state in other places, but this would be the first time that a subdivision like this has been in the Seward.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Then help me with the money trail here. So the developer upfront is the one that's going to get the benefit. So then, they save, I didn't follow all your numbers, X amount of dollars on their upfront cost. That gets passed along as a savings to the buyer by a cheaper lot.
Correct.
Cost, correct?
Yes.
So, what, what holds the developer to doing that? In other words, what prevents the developer from just saying, hey, I got some cheap money here, I'm just going to charge what I want to anyway?
That was one of the, one of the issues discussed at CRA, and I think one of the reasons, one of the thoughts, in addition to this traffic in the school, they thought they need to explore more. As of now, there's no covenants, there's nothing in this, in that agreement that would, that would make that a true restriction. That can certainly be added, and again, we've seen that in other places that I've done some of these where, where there will be a limitation on lot price based on that production, or something like that. But, but that would need to be added, and presumably, particularly, that the concern that would, you know, would be brought back before it came up here. But yeah, that's, that was one of the issues we've been talking about at CRA that needs to be further, you know.
Sure. So then, say that the lot is $7,000 cheaper than it normally would have been. I'm just throwing a number out there, upfront. Okay, so for 15 years, the homeowner then, on his property taxes, that portion of what normally would have went to the school or to property taxes, is going to go to pay off that TIP, right? So then after 15 years, then the property owner's taxes would go up then, correct?
No.
That's the part I wonder if it would work.
Yeah. So here's how, here's how it looks from the property owner's perspective, well, from the beginning. So the, the redeveloper builds up the infrastructure, builds the homes, and they filed a notice to divide taxes with the county assessor. At the county assessor level, they then set that base value at whatever the current value is prior to construction. And then the homeowner gets assessed the exact same. I think it actually now shows up a little bit different on the tax statement, but the taxes don't change at all. Regardless of if there's TIP or not, their taxes are the same. So for that 15-year period, and they still just pay it to the county the exact same. There's nothing different from their perspective. After 15 years, it's the same payment to the county.
But the notes paid off.
The notes paid off, it goes back to the school district and the county, everybody else. But from that homeowner's perspective, they would see no difference at all because of TIP during the 15-year period and after the 15-year period.
And there would be some hope that the valuation would go up during the 15 years, whether it's to improvements or just normal market.
Right.
So that at the 15-year mark, you're actually going to see an even higher valuation for those properties.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point. We never, we never really build in just that general appreciation of value, but as everybody knows, more likely than not, over 15 years, there's going to be some general increase in valuation. So, you would see, recognize as well, we just never really built that.
To Andrew's earlier point, I mean, there's a lot of details that still need to be worked out. This is, I think since the CRA hasn't made a recommendation yet, this is really more of a discussion of the concept and this type of use of TIP for this purpose, that's something that the council would support. Because if the council doesn't want to go that direction, then this whole discussion would move at that point. And it would be on the developer to decide if they wanted to move forward without that kind of assistance. But, but that was sort of the question I had initially earlier was, you know, what if a builder purchased a lot? Then what's there to guarantee that that savings would be passed along? And so there are other programs out there, like there are NIFAP programs, which is what we're used for, the houses just south of the cemetery on that, on that street. And there's a number of criteria that's required throughout that to make sure that they stay affordable moving forward. But that's a whole nother animal, it's just that if you're looking for a model of some of those criteria that might be useful in this discussion, that would be one place you could look at.
Yeah, that's a good point. We've done some of these, we've done some projects in different communities. I can think of one-off hands where they were, you know, it was kind of similar. The idea was they were roughly buying down the value of the lots, or, you know, through TIP, for about $30,000. And so, again, in that agreement, there was a covenant that, you know, said, well, here's the, you know, max price of the lot, or something like that. There's a lot of, see, there's, there's a lot of ways you can build that into that, because there will be a redevelopment agreement ultimately approved by the council between the CRA and the developers, so that can have any terms that you can put in there.
Chris, do you want that as a point?
You brought up the point, I think, if I take this lot and I sell it to another developer, you know, how do we put restrictions, I mean, this is the third time, I'm very innocent, but I know a lot about it, and you could estimate it as affordable house. Can we set max house price, you know, what can be done? And then take into account the school district's concern, can we limit the amount of buildup that happens each year?
You've got it laid out down five-year phase, five, is that right?
Four.
Yeah, four or five years, I mean, can we limit this number of houses this year, this number of houses, this number of houses? And, you know, I mean, that's what needs to be figured out, put just through. This is the first time we're doing this as a city, and we want it to be successful for all parts. And then obviously, this is phase one of three or four phases of building they want to do with 129 lots. We got to get the first one right, do it correctly, or there's probably going to be a phase two, phase three, at least not with the TIP. So we need to, if it's going to happen, we need to figure it out, get those restrictions in there, what are they? What, what are the developers willing to do? And get everybody on the same page and make it.
And, and get everybody on the same page and make it successful.
And at the CRA meeting, one thing that was raised was potentially amongst the CRA members, a joint meeting with this board, I don't know what will come of that, but again, to talk about some of those issues, because that was, again, these were some of the issues that were raised. I would say all of those things, any sort of, from a, from the community development law and redevelopment agreement, anything like that is, that they're feasible. We've done a lot of different things, a lot of different ways to be creative to solve the problem. The one thing we cannot do, just, just so we're clear, is the one thing we cannot do is say, okay, we're, for example, we're going to use TIF, but we're going to divide that taxes for everything except the school board's percentage. And we're going to still let the school board have that, or the school district have that. You can't, it's an all or nothing beyond that when you divide the taxes. So that's, you can limit it for the number of years, you could do all kinds of other, you could have a side agreement, but that's, that's essentially the one thing we can't do, is, is make some allocations of the incremental tax on top of the base value. But past that, you know, the contract, there's lots of options to get to the right.
Is that something based on your experience? Could you perhaps put together a list of what different, not that they were all quite in this situation, but just about maybe in future discussions, the CRA level and our, here at the council level?
Yeah.
What, what different options have been utilized and to what end? Like what was the reason for, for this and that? And to see if that would, at least the council has some ideas of what those might look like as well as the developer, just to make sure that it, it makes sense. And to Chris's point, if there's a way to make it work for everyone, you know, I'd rather have all, like, all your cards on the table and pick the ones that make the most sense.
Well, and it does sound like for every challenge that has been raised, there are solutions. Like there is a path forward, we just have to throw that needle and figure out what that path is.
Right, and I think ultimately, when you're talking about TIF as a, as a economic development tool, some might argue about whether it's really a economic development tool, but for our purposes, let's say it is, you know, what, what is, what's the community benefit that we're trying to accomplish? And what's the most strategic and specific way or most tailored way that we can accomplish that? Because at the end of the day, if the council does say yes, we're going to move forward with this, with this project, what's, when the next developer comes along, and next developer after that comes along and says, well, you gave TIF for building houses here, I want TIF for my, my subdivision. What distinguishes though, unless the policies are always going to say yes, which I don't think that's the case, how do you distinguish between the one you said yes to and the one you say no to? And if it truly is low income housing, then we really, I think, need to discuss how to tailor that in a way to accomplish that goal. And, and, and what, and I'm not, we've never really articulated what exactly the goal is. I mean, is it, we want affordable housing? I mean, does that, can that be accomplished with apartments? Or when we say affordable housing, do we mean home ownership? You know, what does that look like exactly? I think we, maybe we need to have a better discussion about what it is we're trying to accomplish. Because, you know, what if these lots are affordable and there's people, investors come in and buy up a bunch of these lots and then have them built and they turn into rentals? Do we care? You know, if the goal is homeownership, then we care. If the goal is affordable housing and that would include rentals, then maybe we don't care. But that's just the discussion we haven't really had because we've not looked at housing before. Other communities that have a much, we typically have good problems, if you want to call them that, in Seward, because they're based on growth. There are communities out there, and the one, one you were kind of alluding to, where they can't get people to move in. And so they're trying to lower the, the cost of housing, the cost of lots, because they want people to move to a community because they're not growing. So that's a whole different conversation and a whole different issue that they're trying to deal with. And so, you know, while we may think we have problems, our problems are mostly good problems that other communities wish they had, to be quite honest with you. But what we do have a comment portion of this, I wonder, council have opportunities to ask your questions first, or maybe you give your comments first. And then you have the developer, I don't know, did you guys?
Mayor, do I have more, just in response, as, because it came up at the book of CRA meeting and the planning commission meeting. There, you know, one sort of natural limitation on this for residential is the light substandard declaration and the cap on that that are calculated as light. Now, in Seward, you're well below the cap, so there would be room to, to expand that light substandard area. But the, the way the statute works and the definition of it, it would personally have to get a light study then for any new area. But it would be, it would be difficult to add in, for example, pure, like forty acres of farm ground without anything else to it. Now, you can have forty acres of farm ground in the middle of an overall area that would meet the definition of light substandard, but again, probably not by itself. That's oversimplifying, there's a study involved, but that is one sort of statutory limitation. It, it's not absolute because you can add more blighted area. But again, just as far as one distinguishing point is, it must be in the light substandard area, and there is a cap at thirty-five percent of the community, you're below that.
Yeah, and there's, just so council knows, there's a lot of maneuverability within that because you can actually remove areas out of your map to reduce your percentage to put new areas into it. And so, and we primarily, when we first did this, probably almost what, ten years ago, nine years ago?
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, nine, yeah, time flies. We, the focus on that original map was simply the downtown business district and then that corridor that goes towards downtown Highway fifteen. But again, there's nothing that says you can't move that around if the council wanted to. But typically, it, after the initial map is set, it's typically project driven unless the council recognizes, here's an area we really want to incentivize, so we're going to put that into that, into the map. Typically, the developer comes and says, I want to do a development in this area if it's outside of that zone, would you consider adding it to that map? That's sort of how that process would work. Do you have any questions or comments from the council this time?
No, I was, I was going to ask if the applicant has anything, but...
Well, I'm going to have a comment portion here, I'm going to start that right now then. And did you guys want to present, or did you want to say anything at this time?
Sure. Do you want me to stand here in the middle, or?
What's that?
You just want me to stand here in the middle, or?
Yeah, well, unless you, yeah, because this isn't really good setup. I mean, your back is going to be to somebody. So if you want to stand up or you want to stay seated, that's fine. Just state your name and address and we'll go from there.
All right, perfect. It's a good evening, I'm Thomas Caden, my address is eleven nineteen Augusta Drive, Seward, and I am the managing member of Arrowhead State, the developer behind the TIF application. So I'll just be splitting this presentation into two different parts. The first part being just a brief overview of Arrowhead State, the over, high level overview of the subdivision and the types of housing that we're planning on putting there, and then a quick overview of the numbers. And then lastly, we'll address some concerns and that we've heard through some of the other boards that we've been a part of and, and community members as well. So to get started, Arrowhead State's LLC was formed in June of this year and is made up of members that are all residents and/or business owners in Seward County. All of us are greatly passionate in helping grow and better the community of Seward, which led us to putting this proposed development together. We designed the development with the direction of the city's comprehensive plan, housing study, and my own personal experience to formulate a target market of housing price between a hundred and ninety thousand and two hundred and ninety thousand. Again, with the direction of the city to the comprehensive plan and this land being blighted substandard, it was obvious that the path forward for this development would be using taxing and financing. So the packet that Shane just brought to you guys, on the, I think, the right-hand side there, we have the information with the subdivision and the layout there. The first page there, and this kind of, I'll hit on this in the, the next part here with some of the concerns that we initially received and such, but that was an initial layout and concept that we, that we put together to, you know, try to get as many lots in there as possible with the more traditional north and south, east and west intersections. And we went away with that to offer, in our opinion, and I guess other community members' opinion, a lot more attractive subdivision that you often see, oftentimes see in, in larger town communities. And that also offers a lot more green space and recreation, such as the trails that we have in there, as you can see in the, the second page there with the, our subdivision design. There's, I think, a mile worth of trails in there that obviously then connects together. And then on the third page, I believe, you can see where the, how the walking trail will look and integrating that in with the ponds, the pond that's already there and the natural waterway, and then when we add some, some ponds as well, how that kind of looks. And then lastly, you can see a few renderings of single family townhomes that we've done, whether it be in Seward or other communities, that we were, because the lot price was, you know, at that thirty thousand dollar or below price point, we were able to put, you know, these type of homes up in that, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand to two hundred and ninety thousand price point, sell them at that, that point. And so I wanted to, you know, put those visuals in there for you guys so that, you know, you can see that we are trying to put together an attractive development with really nice looking housing. But, you know, we want to hit that, that price point that I think everyone in this, this room would agree that Seward needs, and is a price point that is not getting hit right now. And so, you know, again, putting the, the nice subdivision and the nice homes together with that price point, I think, makes for a successful project. And obviously, in order to get to that, that's, you know, using the tool that the city provides with taxing and financing, that's why we're here. And then Andrew did a good job running through the numbers. The only thing I'll hit on there is, so the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a house average, that is, again, assessed value, that is something that we feel is very conservative. You know, oftentimes, assessed value versus what an act, the house actually sells for is much less. And so we, we plan on that. And, and really, for the homes that we're planning there, for the ones that we have built in Seward and what they've gotten assessed for, it was actually closer to that two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and sixty thousand dollar mark. And so although we are, you know, looking to capture the full fifteen years, we, we are pretty conservative on our numbers. And so, you know, if you were to run the, the number of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a house, I think that comes out to thirteen years and, and so on. So again, Andrew did a good job touching on that, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask. But I guess, lastly, we'll go into just some, I guess, concerns and, you know, things that have been brought to our attention through talking to the different groups and, and members of the community and such. The, the first one is something that the mayor and Andrew kind of already talked about a little bit, but, you know, just setting that precedent of using TIF for all, all subdivisions moving forward. Again, that's, that's not our intention, and I don't think that's your guys' intention either, to, to set that precedent. And again, the reason why I don't think, again, Andrew kind of stated this earlier, it's not really possible, it's just because there's not any large masses of land out there that are in the blind substandard that, you know, could be turned into a subdivision. This is the only piece of ground in Seward that is in the blind substandard that could support a subdivision. And so in order to, as Andrew touched on, in order to do that, either they would have to go through a study, which, you know, you know, on my last project with apartments, we had to go through a study, and I would say everyone in this room would agree that all those houses there were very much blighted. And, and I, you know, the, the application survey to get that done, I think we only got it by one point. So with that being said, it's a tough, tough application to go through to actually get in the blind substandard. And then the other option is the city going through whenever you guys do that and, you know, add a, a piece of ground into the blind substandard, and that would be on you guys, obviously, to make that decision. And, and so then, the other item that we've talked about in the CRA and the planning commission and, you know, just other people in the community, is the, I guess, increased traffic and the traffic flow on the Highway fifteen. Jake Vash, who's the most likely going to be the engineer on this project, which obviously you guys all know, he, he looked into that concern with the state, and right now, even if this subdivision, after this twenty-nine lots even, was built out, and we wouldn't, according to him and the, reaching out to NDOT, that we would not, we would not hit that, that, that minimum to request a study to be done. And so I would say that that would be something that, again, we can talk about later on as we're, you know, going through zoning and stuff like that, but at this time does not seem to be a, a concern. And I guess visually, I don't know how familiar you guys are with that area, but currently there is a turning lane onto Pine Street. If you were going outside town, you're, you're going from north to south, there is a turning lane there. And then if you're going south to north, there is a turning lane on the street to the south there where the Mexican restaurant and the motel is. So there are plenty of access points already to, to, to get in and out. And then, you know, the, the, the school issue is obviously probably the biggest thing that we've, we've talked about through the different boards. Again, all the members of this LLC are all landowners and pay property taxes in Seward, and so it is obviously not our intention to hurt the school district, and we want to, we all, you know, I have a kid that hopefully will someday go to Seward, and so we, you know, that's not our intentions to hurt the school, and, and we, we ultimately want to make that tax base better, which we will do after the fifteen years. And so I think a big thing is to remember that if, you know, we as a city want to hit those different price points in housing, and we want to cater, or we want to continue to recruit folks like Pet Source and others to the rail campus, that we need to provide a different type of housing, and this is the tool and the toolbox to do that. And so, again, it's an investment that, that, that needs to be made. And one, I guess, one quick, I guess, number that I will share with you on that is, per the school board or the school's statistics on two kids per household, so that would essentially be, and then their numbers of about thirteen thousand, they cost about thirteen thousand per student to be sent to the school, that would be twenty-six thousand per a house in a subdivision, regardless if it's TIF or not. You know, that house at this price point, assessed value, I think, you know, would they be paying taxes around three thousand? And if half of that's going to the school, that's fifteen hundred. And so, you know, at the end of the day, regardless if it's TIF or not, I think a, a new subdivision in, in Seward or any town affects the school district heavily and is not fairly compensated then by the property taxes, as it would only be, I think, a six percent, you know, it would only cover about six percent of what those, what it costs to send those kids to school. So again, I, I, I think it's, it's an issue. Obviously, the whole state's dealing with, with high property taxes, and unfortunately, I don't have the answer for that. But again, it's, regardless if there is TIF being used or not, for any subdivision going into Seward, it would, it would highly affect the, the school district. So with that, I'll open up for questions and, and discussion.
Thanks, Thomas. Does the council have any questions or comments for Thomas at this time? Obviously, he'd be available to answer questions later. I want to give the council an opportunity first. Okay, you know, I'll go, thank you, Thomas, I'll open up to the rest of the audience. If anyone else wishes to comment on this item. I got Zane here first, and then I'll have to call him after you.
Uh, Zane Francescato, six one six Bradford Street, Seward. Council, I'm, I'm here just to present a couple quick statistics. I spoke at lunch with you about the housing study a few weeks ago, or sorry, a few months ago. It's been flying fast. And what I prepared for you tonight is just kind of a breakdown of, of a couple points that the mayor touched on. That first is kind of where housing is going in Seward. Now, by no means are, are these numbers the answer, but they show kind of an insight based on data that the housing study kind of, kind of brought out. As you can see in the green highlighted areas, I'm focusing on table twenty-six sixteen. As you can see, in the green highlighted areas, I'm focusing on Table twenty-six C, which is the bottom one there. It splits kind of unit demand off by units, or sorry, unit type. So, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom homes split up by owner and renter-occupied households. Of that estimated two hundred and forty-two unit target demand for Seward, one hundred and sixty-two of those units should be targeted for owner occupation, and about eighty targeted for renter occupation. Sixteen of those eighty units are specifically targeted for downtown Seward. But as you can see kind of on those breakdowns, there is a high demand for two-bedroom households, kind of in that affordable, I guess, range of affordability, that's commonly referred to as workforce housing or affordable housing. But that sixty-one to eighty percent AMI level there, there's such a number, that's kind of considered the sweet spot for affordable housing options. As you can see, again, that two-bedroom, that two-bedroom price point, or that two-bedroom price point, about twelve units, kind of the sweet spot. And for owner-occupied units, actually, that sweet spot is three-plus bedroom units. Based on what Thomas and Arrowhead State's, you know, presented in their plan, this subdivision would complement that kind of demand for our community very nicely. And secondly, I wanna touch upon another point the mayor made, and it's that, you know, we don't necessarily have bad problems in housing in Seward. That's hundred percent true. We have beautiful homes going up, we have about thirty home constructions a year in Seward. Very beautiful homes, most often falling about three hundred thousand dollars and above, which again, is not a bad problem. But when we're trying to attract a younger workforce and retain some of the workforce that can use into Seward every day for work, that does kind of spell a little bit of a problem, because again, it's hard to afford one of those nicer homes when you're kind of in that missing middle income bracket level. And also, kind of the other issue that's part of that is our housing vacancy rate. During the council meeting, I discussed that vacancy rate, there was some discussion around it. There's about seventy-five vacant homes as of October twenty nineteen that were considered to be on the market. A healthy vacancy rate's at about five to seven percent for a community of Seward size. And essentially, that means is, you know, homes need to be on the market for potential residents to move in. Again, not inherently a bad problem, but, you know, a new subdivision like Arrowhead State's definitely helps appeal that kind of need in the community. That's kind of all I have to say here. Again, based on the housing study data, this, again, Arrowhead State was perfectly complementing some of the needed areas in our community. Thank you.
Is there any question from Zane? Name not Paul, USP? Welcome.
Okay, thank you for your time. Paul Doer, twenty-two eleven, three hundred and fiftieth, Staplers, Nebraska. Member of the school board here in Seward. Lived in county all my life, and, you know, I consider Seward basically my hometown. So, you know, I'll tell everybody from Staplers, but I went to high school at Seward, and I think we have a lot of things going for us. Dr. Fields had a, he's playing a parent tonight, so-